I'd like to call the November 13th, 2014, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
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 First order of business today are council minutes for the meeting of October 9th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of October 9th, 2014.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next order of business matters as special privilege, and today we are fortunate to have with us Ann Davis, Williamsburg James City County Treasurer. Ann, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today. Think you have some, a special message for us.
I do, I do. I do have, and I have a few words prepared, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am Ann Davis and the treasurer for James City County as well as the city of Williamsburg. Now, as you are aware, or maybe not, I have announced my intent to retire effective December 31st. Now, this decision was both bitter and sweet. Bitter because I'm about to leave employees of the city and the county that have truly become my family. And like family, I will miss each and every one of them. The decision was sweet because I'm excited to make a huge life change, that, of course, of retirement, compounded by marriage, and then compounded by a move to Hanover County. Now, I have been in public service for 29 years, with 16 years as your treasurer. I sincerely feel that I've had the best job in the world, in the best place in the world, with the best people in the world. And I have been very blessed. I would like to thank you for your support over the years. Because of your support, my office has been able to serve city and school finance offices, and most of all, the citizens. My deputy and I have always strived to be open to ideas for improvement and to, and to the request for help from fellow employees. I believe this has been the key to making our offices very efficient. And because my current term will not expire until December 2015, my assistant treasurer, Jennifer, Jennifer Odie Toms, will be sworn as interim treasurer. Now, I believe you and the citizens of Williamsburg will be pleased with the service she will provide. Jenny has been with James City County since 1994, serving in the commission of the revenues office, finance office, as well as treasurer's office. She has earned a master's degree from Liberty University, and is a native of the county, and comes from a family with 94 total years of public service. And I would like to take this opportunity, if I may, to introduce you to Jennifer Toms.
Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. I just want to take this opportunity to say that I am very excited to be given the opportunity to serve the citizens of the city of Williamsburg as the interim treasurer. While we hate to see Ann leave, her deputy and I are looking towards to the future and the changes this will bring to the office and the citizens. As Ann has taught me, from the very beginning, my door will always be open to anyone having any questions of me or my office. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ann, I think I express for council how much we appreciate all you've done for this community and the service you've provided. And we are sorry to see you go, but on the other hand, we are very pleased for your future and wish you the best.
Thank you.
And Jennifer, we look forward to working with you and doing all we can to help. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business are public hearings, and we have two today. The first is a public comment period on appointments to the, the school board. And currently, we have two applications for the school board. I do have one speaker's card for this, and that's Sarah Stafford. Sarah, if you'd like to come forward, and then anyone else who wishes to, may speak to this.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, members of council. I just wanted to speak in strong support of Kira Cook's application to be a member of the school board representing the city of Williamsburg. Kira's a long-term resident of the city. She came here to go to the College of William &amp; Marion, essentially never left. She's been very active in the community in a number of different ways. She was initially a self-employed artist, doing lots of work on arts and cultural events around the city and the larger area. She was a key staff member in the Jamestown Celebration, and most recently, she's been a wonderful employee of the Williamsburg Community Health Foundation. She's been working with some of my students and faculty members at the college, and I think has really done a lot to advance issues of health and health education in the city. And I think that she would be a wonderful member of the school board. You all know that I'm a member of the planning commission, since she appointed me, but you may not know that the only reason that I'm on planning commission is because of Kira. She was the one who encouraged me to take an active role in working with the community, not to just be a critic of what was happening, but to, to really put myself out there and contribute to the community. And I think that what I know of her dedication to the city, I think she'd be a wonderful school board member. I'd also say that I, I think it's really important that Williamsburg have representative on the school board who has children in the school system. So Kira has a daughter in the elementary school system and a son in the middle school system. She's very committed to public education. Her plans are to keep the kids in the system until they graduate. And I think that she has a perspective that would be really helpful to have on the school board. So I just urge you to strongly consider her application. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you for your service on planning commission. If anybody else wishes to speak to the school board appointment, please come forward and state your name and address. Mr. Whitley, welcome.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Holman, members of city council, I'm John Whitley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I'm not here to speak for or against either of the candidates, each worthy in their own right. I'm just hopeful that as you watch their performance and hold, you will hold them accountable to the well-being of the city and what our future holds as far as public education is concerned. I would hope also that they would be charged to be ever mindful of some of the present concerns that are existing within the structure of the school board, and who a recent person who has been elected from James City County to serve. There is a, a leaning or a faction that is seeking to gain more than significant, but gain control of decisions made by the school board. I will not identify individual, nor will I identify the, the type of faction there, but to be, make certain that our candidate is charged and is supported to speak strongly and on behalf of Williamsburg. I would also hope that at some point, since there are five other members of, of, of the school board, each from James City County carrying a vote of one, that perhaps the Williamsburg representatives, appointees could carry a, a vote weight of 2.5 to kind of equalize the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Anybody else wish to speak to the school board appointment? If not, we will schedule interviews and then make an appointment at the December meetings. Am I correct? Okay. Okay. The next public hearing, revisions of use regulations in LB, B, ED, and PDC districts. Can we do this as one hearing on the two things? Okay. Mr. Nestor.
Thank you. These changes are relatively minor adjustments to zoning ordinance. The planning staff has recently reviewed the regulations in our LB4 limited business district with a goal of looking at ways to make these regulations more flexible while retaining the less intense care to the district compared to the B business districts. We only have a few LB4 districts in the city, primarily along the Strawberry Plains and John Tyler Lane corridor. The basic uses now permitted are banks and offices, plus nursing homes and assisted living facilities, and a variety of public uses. When we looked at additional uses that would be appropriate and would have similar intensity to the uses that exist now, we came up with two. One, convenience service establishments limited to barber shops, beauty parlors, and spas, tailors, and shoe repair shops, and veterinary offices and clinics provided that there are no outdoor activities. Now, that, the veterinary use under the way the regulations are currently written, that would fall under the office category. Again, we're being a little bit more explicit in spelling that out. And we also want to add for clarity, medical and dental offices and clinics, which have always been considered an off issues, but they're called out in some of our districts. So we want to try to be consistent across the zoning ordinance. In addition to these changes, we're proposing that hospitals and heliports for medical transport helicopters be deleted from the LB4 district. This was, dates back to when the community hospital was in the LB4 district, but now these uses are permitted in the ED district where the doctor's hospital is located. Now, moving on to PCR 14-022, to ensure consistency throughout the zoning ordinance, we're proposing changes to a variety of other districts. Adding medical and dental offices and clinics as permitted uses in the districts where office uses are permitted. Adding veterinary offices and clinics provided that there are no outdoor activities. In addition to the LB4 district, adding that to B2, B3, ED, and ED2. Then, we're adding new uses, proposing new uses, fitness studio and fitness center. Fitness studio would be in B1, B2, B3, ED, ED2, and PDC. Fitness center being a larger, more intense use would be limited to B2, B3, and the ED districts. Would add definitions and parking requirements for the fitness center and fitness studio use. So that completes the, the changes we're talking about. Now, we've also noted that we have a number of LB4 districts that were conditionally zoned and proffered specific use regulations. The office uses just south of Berkeley Middle School, Doctor's Cherry's office on South Henry Street. The idea we had was it would be good if these districts also had the same flexibility allowed in the LB4 districts. So if these changes are made, we would contact the owners and see if they are interested in working with the planning department to reference the use regulations in the LB4 district rather to their specific proffers. The same thing could possibly be done, done with the Governor Berkeley Professional Center, which is a PUD zoning rather than an LB4, but has those same uses. And those say other professional uses approved by Williamsburg City Council. Well, that's sort of a circuitous way of doing things, and it's better just to have it all spelled out in the zoning ordinance. So staff recommended these changes to planning commission. Planning commission held its public hearing last month. No one spoke at the hearing. They recommended approval of these two cases by a six oh vote. And to implement the commission's recommendation, council would need to approve proposed ordinances 14-26 and 14-27. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Reed. Are there any questions for Reed before we go to public?
Mr. Nestor, if one of the, has reached out to the property owners, and if one or all of them respond affirmatively that they would be interested in the change to the PUD, is there a process to follow after that? Is it simply a?
It would, it would need to be a, an amendment of the proffered zonings or an amendment of the PUD. So that would require a public hearing in front of planning commission, city council, the same process we're going through today.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick question about the veterinary hospitals and clinics. You say, provided that there's no outdoor activities, what does that mean? Like, what are we precluding?
Well, that would be if, if they had outdoor exercise runs or things of that nature. You know, it's, we're looking at that just like, a use like a doctor's office where everything's indoors.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing and we, ask anybody who wishes to speak to either proposed ordinance 14-26 or 14-27, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Frumming.
I can't say that I have much to add at this point.
Scott.
No, I think what, what we see does, cleans, cleans up some of the language, does provide some additional flexibility, as pointed out by staff. I guess the, the one thing that just jumps out at me is, you know, those veterinary, you know, they have outdoor dog walking areas, and, and, you know, if we're going to allow it, but, but not have an environment in which they, they can operate, it just seems.
Well, it would, I, I take it would mean that they could, could have a veterinary practice, but not, not board animals and therefore have that type of.
Actually, we used to take our dog to the one at Brookwood Drive, and they boarded, but they didn't have outdoor runs. And they're in the city.
That's possible, but that's not.
It can be done, yeah.
That's not sort of the, the model, the modern, that's work on.
No.
Any other comments, discussion?
We should consider these separately.
You should.
Separately, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the text changes to definitions into the LB4 limited business corridor district be approved as detailed in proposed ordinance 14-26.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I would also move that the text changes to definitions, parking in the LB1, LB2, LB3, B1, B2, B3, ED, ED2, D2, and PDC districts be approved as detailed in proposed ordinance 14-27.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Reed, thank you very much again. And thank planning commission for their, their work on this. It's, the devil's in the detail, as we know. Next order of business are reports. The first, monthly financial statements. Jack, anything?
Just something to, to note. We're now one-third of the way through the fiscal year with the October statement. If you look on page three, every year at this time, we have the closeout of all of the capital accounts as they stood as of June 30 of the prior fiscal year. And once all that accounting is done, then we're able to bring projects that are still ongoing, in capital projects from prior year, into the current year. And so that carryover funding is shown on page three to give, to give a total capital budget for the year. So if you take our current capital budget of 6.3 million and add a carryover, carryover 8.3, the line share of that is the Stryker budgeted funds from last year. We end up with a total of budgeted funds for capital projects in this year of 14.7 million. Now, we know not all of that will be spent. For instance, there are allowances in there for school capital contribution that we don't expect to occur this year. But it does, it's helpful to look at this page when then looking at the final page that shows our fund balances and realize how significant portions of our fund balance are already spoken for in terms of capital projects, much less those other projects that are in the CIP for future years' planning. So that's all I wanted to point out. Happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Sarah as well.
Any questions?
I have one question. On the Prince George Street reconstruction carryover, is that representing money that has yet to be paid out, or work that has yet to be done?
I imagine what it is, is the balance of the account that the public works director wanted to make sure there are no last-minute bills or anything coming in that he would have it, that needed to be satisfied. However, the project is complete now, and, and there's no additional work being done.
Any other questions? Not the monthly department, operating reports, anything in particular?
Nothing in particular to point out.
And any questions about operating reports? Not, and city manager reports, we have a number. First of those is the adoption of the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the 2015-16 biennium.
Yes, sir. We're now completed the process for this two-year cycle on the goals, initiatives, and outcomes, which of course are designed to advance the city's vision, where council every two years comes back and looks at strategic objectives of the city against that, that long-term vision. We've had 10 or more public meetings and opportunity for comment over the last four or five months, and the result is the eight goals. And within those, there are 65 initiatives, some 53 outcome measures aligned each of the goals, plus the results of the national, national citizen survey. So it's all packaged now and ready for your action.
Any comments, discussion before we?
I'll make a comment, if I may. I can't count how many times we've done this since I've been on council. More than four. And every time we do it, there's a good effort to improve the process, to make it more inclusive, to bring more people into the conversation. And this year was no exception. I think the, beginning the process earlier in June, I believe, with that joint meeting was a terrific way to bring in the expertise and opinion of the various boards and commissions and other stakeholders in the community who are impacted by these goals and initiatives. And I just want to congratulate staff on the effort there. It's never perfect. We never hear everything. We, we don't always anticipate everything. Some things will be added as we go along, and perhaps a few things will be determined as not worth pursuing because of changing circumstances. But I think it's worth noting the responsiveness of staff to try to, each year, do, every two years, do a better job of bringing this together. And then particularly, the decision several years ago to tie these back to the budget, so that they all integrate in a way that makes sense to anybody who wants to see this information. And I think also help staff make the best decisions that they can as we go forward.
Reed. Scott?
No, I, just got to follow up on that sentiment. You know, I was, I was pleased, and I, and I think we've gotten positive feedback from members of the community about their opportunity to participate in the discussion and, you know, being able to participate, you know, the community building with the survey, you know, counting the votes and going through that exercise. The, the joint meeting that we had at the Quarter Path Rec Center where we invited outside agencies to come speak, while we did the, the survey, that opportunity at the rec center was a new, something new we did this year. And I think it says a lot about this process in the city, that we're looking to be inclusive and want to make, want to make sure that we're not excluding anybody from that conversation. So I think staff and all of us have done well to get to this point.
Judy?
Oh, I'd like to echo all that, but I'd also like to especially thank Jody Miller, who I think shepherded this along. And every time I had a question, she had the answer. And that's always good. So thank you, Jody, for helping us with it.
Yeah, again, I, I hope not only Jack and Jody, but I think every department head and virtually every employee participated in this, and, and that's important. So I hope you'll convey our thanks to them as well.
Thank you.
I'll take.
You need a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council adopt the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the 2015-2016 biennium.
Second. Have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. Next report has to deal with the Stryker Center, and that has two parts to it. The Stryker Center comprehensive agreement and the construction management agreement. Jack?
Yes, sir. Back in February, council approved an interim agreement with Daniel and company and their associates, architects Steeman and Peace, to complete the design for the Stryker Center, and also move ahead with demolition of old Stryker, which is now demolished. And, and then so over that period of time, all the work that needed to be done to complete plans and specifications has been done. It's been a laborious process, as it is, if it's going to, if you're going to do a good job with it. And I really believe our, our architects and contractor have done just that. We have a budget for the project of 6.25 million with 600, with 6 million from city and library contribution and another allowance assisted by the library foundation board of up to 250,000 for furnishings and technology. And so that's the money we have to work with. We have a contract proposal at 5.695 million for the Daniel contract. In addition to that, there are other allowances for direct costs that will be done by the city and, and by the library. That brings the whole project in within budget at 6.224 million dollars. So we are ready to recommend that you enter into now the comprehensive agreement, which you've seen in detail, with Daniel and company to, to affect the construction. There are also, also in the proposal from Daniel, there were three alternates that were given to the city that if we wished to either lower that project cost, or in one case, increase it, we could do so. Two of the alternates dealt with the exterior finishes and, and some flooring on the inside that would lower the cost of somewhere over $50,000. And one, a shift, a shift, a quality of material issue on the exterior of using rather than precast concrete stairs on the exterior, shifting that to granite. My recommendation to you is that we accept the contract as it was proposed without exercising any one of the three alternates. And so with that, we are ready for your action.
Great. Thank you. And I'd also like to thank, I think Sam Daniels there in the back, and I think I saw David Steeman come in. Ed Peace is out of town, but thank you all for being here, and thank you for all the work you've done to get us to this point. I know it's, you guys have done a terrific job, so thanks. Let me turn to council for discussion, comments. Thought, thought about the stair treads.
Well, here we are, coming to either the beginning of another process or the end of a very long process to get us to the beginning of the other process. And as we think about this building and the importance of it as the point at which, in a general sense, the citizens and city government convene together, it really is important that we do it well and we do it right. I think we've made great progress to that end. While you never want to spend money lightly, I never want to, and I know none of my colleagues like to, this also isn't the time, in my mind, to cut a corner that might in some, even if it's in a slight way diminish a building that should have a 50 or so year lifespan, and is such a visible and important part of that community center. And so I'm, I'm interested in the three alternatives. I'm probably more interested in, well, one and three, but may I ask Mr. Steeman a couple of questions?
Yes, please. David, would you please come to the podium? Again, thank you for being here, David.
Sure. Would you mind speaking to the reason we might consider substituting the granite exterior stair treads? Are, these are only on the north bound, north boundary side of the building?
That's correct.
So there are none that lead out into the library courtyard area?
No. You might recall that we, with the grading and sort of a little bit of fine tuning of the building finished floor, that we eliminated stairs as the Stryker building connects to the library across the square. So there are no, no treads in that vicinity. They are all along boundary, as you say.
Because one reason I would see, considering the, adding the granite, is that it builds a connection across that courtyard to the library through the existing material. But I'm just wondering, from your perspective, how important that is on a side of the building that's not directly connected there?
Well, I'm not so sure that it's purely about traffic and durability and that. It's also just a kind of a material quality. You see it at the community building. You see the granite curb in the square. So it's really an effort to sort of stitch it together. And the byproduct of that is a more durable stair. I think probably a little more resistant to staining. That's the thing you might get into with precast. So we think it's a great idea, but again, you know, it's for your deliberation. So we think it's a great idea, but again, you know, it's for your deliberation.
And on, you're in charge.
I mean, it seems to me that one of the things we talked about early on are what are those visual signals that tie this area together? And that to me, that because that granite is used in the fountain areas, used on the community building, that using it here seems to me to create those visual links that are important, and that's what I'm hearing you say. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Exactly.
And can you talk, sure, on alternative three, about option of cork flooring or carpet? How, I mean, I'm not a, well, how sound absorbent is the cork, is the cork flooring?
Well, it's not as much as carpet. Obviously, you probably knew that answer, but it is a little better than some of your other hard floor surfaces. So it does tend to absorb a little bit of sound.
Is that, and I know this is a completely different building, but I think one of the real disadvantages at the community building is that there's so little soft surface there that we have sound bouncing all around. Can you talk a little bit to the sound design?
Sure. We did have an acoustic engineer involved along the way and with specific emphasis on the exhibit, the sort of multipurpose room, because that, by nature of its use, really wants to have sort of hard and durable surfaces that aren't going to sort of wear out or show wear patterns. So the tendency, the response to that is to use those harder, more durable materials. But we have some devices up in the ceiling, above the ceiling grid, that are intended to absorb sound, and then some sort of hybridized panels that have acoustic absorbing material and then wood slating, which sort of takes two acoustic principles, break it up and absorb it in the surface of that wall as you look toward the chamber. So we've done what we can, and then we have the sort of additional acoustic panels that are hung up above the ceiling. So they're not as obvious as, you know, sort of a plod wall treatment, but they'll be up there doing the acoustic work.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for him, but if anybody else.
Well, the cork flooring issue, it's by understanding that the meeting rooms are carpeted?
Yes.
And the cork floor we're talking about is only that hall, right?
Exactly. We have, in the multipurpose, we have cork as well as the east-west hall, but then it would terminate right there at the beginning of the medium meeting room and run this carpet back down the hall.
So it's not huge?
So it's a small one.
Yeah.
But that carpet also, talk about the durability and the wear that shows on carpet versus the cork flooring, and how often would you have to replace the carpet to make it look like it's not overused?
Well, it's partly about maintenance, too, and the city does a good job at that. So, I mean, we're using a pretty good grade carpet. We're using carpet tiles, which allow you to come in and make fixes where issues happen. And it's also a green, a green label carpet that we're using for lead. But indeed, the cork, we believe, is going to be a more durable, sort of less maintenance in terms of keeping it clean. And of course, that's, that's a corridor that sort of runs your kitchen operation down to the multipurpose room, so that might be a point of consideration.
Does the cork count towards your lead certification? Is that a sustainable product?
Well, if we had a whole lot more of it, essentially, it's a percentage of the budget.
Okay.
And, you know, if we picked a really, really expensive renewable resource floor, you could do it, or if we had a whole lot more of it.
Gotcha.
So it's not going to really make the contribution, but it certainly is in the spirit of a green solution.
Gotcha. Any other questions? So, but what this does is you have cork in there, and this would substitute the carpet for the cork and reduce the cost a little bit, right?
Just in that one?
And just in that, on that one hallway.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm personally not sure it's worth making that change at this point.
Well, for one thing, there's going to be one of those transitions from carpet to floor that are always, people trip on.
What's the likelihood that we'd have to replace the cork flooring?
Well...
Versus carpet?
Yeah. It's not a material that I can point to and say, I installed, we installed it somewhere twenty years ago, because it's really sort of had a resurgence. Been around for a very long time, but we used it at the Museum of Confederacy in Appomattox, which was completed about three years ago, and they love it, and it still looks great. And so far, that's the sort of anecdotal feedback that we have from installation that we are associated with.
But it's more likely to be, it's more durable than carpet?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, sure. I think with carpet, you plan to replace, with cork, maybe not.
So eventually, that cost would be consumed, the savings would be consumed.
Well, and I just think that the transition is odd, and creates an unfortunate aesthetic.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
No, thank you.
Mr. Steeman? Okay, go ahead. I feel very strongly about alternative one. I think that makes a significant difference in the, that we go with the brick.
That's two.
Oh.
Oh, the brick? Oh, okay. Yeah. No, I agree with you, yeah.
So, I mean, I...
Does anybody disagree?
You're saying that we should go with precast?
Yes, yes, yes.
Go with the precast as designed, don't step down.
Right. We're spending closest six million dollars on a building, and we're talking about less than a hundred thousand dollars of finishes. So in the grand scheme of things, this is a building for the next generation, I want it to look nice and continue to be durable into, towards the end of its life.
So number one, we have an agreement that we ought to go with the precast and not the brick. And number three, I get a sense that people are more comfortable with staying with the cork floor rather than going to carpet in that hallway.
Yes.
What about the risers on the Boundary Street side?
I think we should go with the granite.
I'd like to.
I don't feel strongly about that, but I certainly appreciate it.
I think the visual links are really important.
Well, and it's the people coming out of the parking deck, out of the chamber building, you know, it's not the main entrance, but it is a main, a big entrance.
If we wanted to save money, we should scale back the size of the building and save a few dollars.
We won't put a second floor.
So I think we're, you know, this is, you know, this is what people are going to see and feel and touch every day.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it should be appropriate.
I do too.
So I don't think, yeah, so I think we're on, let's not save the forty, or let's...
Spend the...
Yeah, spend the money.
Okay.
I can give you your new figure, if you want. It's five billion, seven hundred thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Well, with that, are we ready to move forward with the Comprehensive Agreement?
It sounds like a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute the proposed Comprehensive Agreement with Daniel and Company Incorporated to construct the Stryker Center in the amount of five million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Do I need to note that we're, what we're doing on the alternative?
Including alternative two.
Okay, including alternative two.
Second. Have a motion a second. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Again, Jack, thank all the staff who have been involved. It's been a terrific getting to this point. We're looking forward to the next big step. And Sam, thank you, and David, thank you for being here, and thank you for what you've done at this point. And we look forward to working with you over the next year. The next part of it is the Construction Management Agreement. Jack?
Yes, sir. We are recommending that the city employ the services of a project manager that would supervise the project and work with the contractor from this point on out. We are recommending that we use a firm off of the state contract where the pricing is provided by the Virginia Department of General Services, so that we're not going out for a separate bid, but we can use the bid that's already been done by the state. We're recommending that we use the firm of McDonough, Boyard, and Peck, MBP. We've used this company before, particularly as the construction manager on the parking garage, which at that point was the most expensive project we had built as a city government. This will surpass that.
Was it because we took option two?
But we believe that having that professional set of eyes on the job every day saves you the kinds of things that result in courthouse roofs, for instance, where, and so we're recommending, and the other issue is we simply do not have the staff capability to put someone on this job full-time. So the recommendation is that we provide, hire that, and estimated cost based on a fifty-two week construction period would be one hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So that's the recommendation.
Any questions, comments? This is a smart way to go.
I think this is a very smart way to go.
Oh, I do too.
And not that we don't have complete faith in the architect and the construction company, but it's just helpful for staff to have that additional onsite expertise to work through some of these day-to-day issues, and it could save a lot of money in the long run.
I'll take a motion as well.
But, you know, it is a lot of money, and it's money that we weren't planning on spending. I just, you know, until we got this proposal, this is the first time we heard about it. At least I must have missed something. And I'm not a contractor, but, and I know that, as the city manager explained to me in a meeting Monday, that typically you have, when you build a building, you have the architect and you hire the contractor, and that architect kind of helps keep an eye on the project. But in this case, they're working together and essentially formed a team versus, not that we're opposed, but, you know, we're missing that extra set of eyes. And so I see some value in this proposal. I just wonder if, what the alternative, you know, is there an alternative that we could have considered? I did talk to a contractor, and, you know, there was a notion that, gosh, you could hire another architect who could come in and review plans, and maybe that would be a whole lot less. And so I just, I guess I'm not comfortable spending this without seeing some options and having some more discussions. But with that said, you know, I'll certainly...
Jack, would you like to respond to that, or maybe our...
I think the other option that could be less expensive, but I wouldn't recommend it, and that is that we seek to hire a clerk of the work, someone that can manage to pay for, keep up with the, but doesn't have the level of expertise that the construction management firm has. So that's someone that's sort of on the job, but it's, and we would have to then go out and search for that person, and then what you would look for is maybe someone who has construction experience or perhaps is a former inspector that might be available for a year. But you've got to find that person, the right person, and then pay them for that year, and you could reduce the cost by hiring in a typical term that's used as a clerk of the works. That's the Virginia term. That's another way to go, but I think, given the profile of this project, the complexity, that's not the best way to go. But that's another alternative.
Yeah, and I get that these companies exist for a purpose, you know, and it's not just unique to us that we're considering this. What assurances do we have that even if we hire this person and we run into, we find that they use the wrong nails in the roof a year from now?
Sure.
Is there any, do they cover the expense of the repair? Is there any warranty, or do they, is there a liability that they'll, that they take on so that we don't bear the burden?
Well, you mean if...
If they miss something.
I might turn this over to the attorney, because the contractor has a full one-year warranty on the project, plus their additional...
Systems warranties.
System warranties.
From the manufacturer.
Yeah. Now, we would have, if we found that a construction manager should have known something and they failed in that, then that may well be actionable. But I'll turn it over to Chris.
We would have to pursue it either as a breach of contract claim, or we would have to pursue it as a liability claim or negligence claim, I guess.
Right. You use the example of the roof at the courthouse. I mean, how do, how do we avoid that, and would that type of thing be covered if, by hiring this third party?
Exactly. What you're looking at, someone who is on the job all the time and is watching every step of the process, designing to catch something where subcontractor is doing something inappropriately. Certainly, the general contractor, in this case, Mr. Daniel, does not want a sub not performing totally, but, but it's that extra set of eyes on it. So between the contractor and the city's construction manager, you're looking at the roof being installed, and, and is it a hundred percent guarantee? There is none. But it gives you a whole additional layer of insurance against that happening.
Will it, in doing this, will it help alleviate some of the responsibilities of city staff? I know that, you know, when you dig a footing, you have to have, you know, an inspector come out, and I assume that's the city representative.
Right. We'll still be doing building inspection on that, where our inspectors still will be signing off each step along the way. But certainly, you are, you've got, again, a professional that's there all during, the whole time during construction to catch things earlier, and that can not only save the city having to then say, well, that footing was put in incorrectly, tear it all out and put it back. So that saves everybody, but it also saves the contractor. If someone, if a subcontractor is doing something, taking a shortcut, and they catch it, that can also save the contractor from the additional expense of having to rip it out and do it again. So, but it does not take the place of city building inspection.
But the city building inspection that would take place on this project would be the same building inspection that would happen on any private sector project?
Exactly.
So this is that more present and available set of eyes?
I think it's really important to do this because, as somebody pointed out, we're spending six million dollars. We ought to do it right. So I think it's important to take this step.
My question was about potential for saving staff time. So this process versus the clerk of the work type process would probably ultimately save staff time?
I think that, it's just that you're getting a lot more for going with the construction management firm and a construction manager, someone who is certified, professional, and does that. It's just a more competence.
Gotcha. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll recommend, I'll move that council authorize the city manager to execute the MBP proposal to construction management services based on the hourly rates contained in the proposal.
Second. And a second, Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster. Aye.
Next report is authorization to purchase medic twenty replacement.
Chief Dent will give this report.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Holman, members of city council, the city's vehicle replacement plan calls for purchase of a new medic unit this year to replace the current medic twenty, which is a two thousand and seven Chevrolet ambulance, which has approximately one hundred thousand miles on it. The new medic unit would be a two thousand and fifteen Freightliner chassis with a road rescue body. The factors considered in purchasing the new medic unit were the condition of major components, parts availability, and more importantly, the reliability. So to begin this process, we selected a committee comprised of seven fire department members and two members of the vehicle maintenance shop, and they conducted extensive research into all the various units provided by manufacturers. They visited localities, talked to people that operate these units. They were, actually found out a lot of advantages and disadvantages that they were experiencing with particular units. And they also, in most cases, had the opportunity to drive these units. So based on all of that work conducted by the committee, that's why we selected the two thousand and fifteen Freightliner chassis with the road rescue body. A few of the big advantages that were a little, created a much nicer unit than some of the ones that we have. The Freightliner chassis delivers a better ride, handling, and performance. Some of our other chassis are a little bit rougher. This is built a little more heavy duty, which provides a smoother and safer ride for the patient, which is the most important part. We also made some modifications to the patient compartments, and in the rear, usually the medic is operating on one side of the patient. If they operate on the other side of the patient, they're unbelted at that time. So to... So, to create a more safe environment for the provider, we have two action seats now, action seats, one on each side of the patient, so it limits the time that that provider has to be unseat-belted in the back of that unit. Another thing, as you're well aware, firefighter medics, they carry their firefighting personal protective equipment with them on a medic unit in a compartment. The compartments were designed to eliminate some of that exposure from the carcinogens that are carried in firefighting gear when they're on a medic unit, so that was another big advantage to this unit. Just to give you a little bit of information about where we stand with the rest of our fleet, one thing, our medic units responded to approximately 2,950 fire and EMS calls last year, and approximately 2,100 patients were transported. This was for FY 2014. Our 2008 medic unit currently has about 67,000 miles on it, and our 2013 medic unit has about 30,000 miles on it. So, we're, even though we have a hospital that's closer, a little closer now, and a larger percentage of our calls are there, we're still, with special events, units being out of service, we try to rotate them to keep the mileage down. Unfortunately, it doesn't work out. We're just, they stay on the road quite a bit. With this, the existing medic unit will be moved, medic 20 will be removed from the fleet and traded in at a fair market value of $18,000. The new medic unit is proposed to be purchased under cooperative purchase contract through Montgomery County, Virginia. The staff determined that this, the bid awarded to Atlantic Emergency Solutions was competitive. We worked with the manufacturer to make some of those changes that were specific to Williamsburg. We have a contract price of $271,180 minus the trade-in of $18,000 brings the total to $253,180. The funding for this unit was budgeted in the city's vehicle replacement plan for FY 2015 at $300,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, thank you, Chief, and thank all your personnel involved in this, because I know it took a lot of time and effort to get just what we need, so please convey that, our thanks to them as well.
I will.
Any questions?
I have a couple. Chief Dent, is Road Rescue a brand name as opposed to a descriptor of the ambulance body?
Yes, Road Rescue is a brand name. Yes, sir.
Did you say, this is the 2007, and it has 100,000, approximately 100,000 miles on it?
Yes, sir.
But the 2008 has 60,000?
Yes, sir.
That's a, and that's just luck of the draw and the way the rotation worked?
Right. And like, as I said, we try to keep them rotated to keep the mileage down on all the units. Unfortunately, with the age of the 2007 unit, it's probably, I think that, the last time I looked, it'd been out of service about 20 or 21 times. And actually, it's currently out of service due to a significant oil leak, and it's at the shop, which puts us down to those two units. And so, we're constantly, as we try to rotate, and that rotation's interrupted, the mileage keeps going up on those other units.
And what would be the schedule on the '08 unit replacement? How far off are you seeing that?
We're, originally, our plan was to try to get 10 years out of the units. Obviously, this unit didn't quite make 10 years, but that's, that's our current plan. So, we're hoping by getting another medic unit, maybe less out-of-service time for the 2008 and the 2013, and be able to keep that rotation up, or we can keep that 10-year replacement schedule.
That's all. Scott?
All I know is this is a lot less expensive than the fire truck.
But they do, they, the chassis increases for medic units has been tremendous over the last couple of years, and about a 4% increase in the overall cost of medic units.
Deal. No questions?
Yeah.
No, no. Take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Atlantic Emergency Solutions for the purchase of a new replacement ambulance in the amount of $271,180.
Second. I have a motion. A second, would you call the roll, please? Ms. Walton?
Mr. Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Plon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And Chief, thank you, and thank you people very much for this. Next, Williamsburg redevelopment, housing authority quarterly reports.
Deputy City Manager Jody Miller will give this report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Before you today are the quarterly financial and activity reports for the Williamsburg redevelopment and housing authority for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2014. If you'll first look at the financial report, I just want to highlight a few things. First, on a cash basis, the housing authority at the end of the fiscal year had a surplus of a little bit over $76,000, and that can be attributed to three reasons. First, you can see, based on the financials, the HUD subsidy was higher than we had budgeted for. This is because the housing authority's public housing assessment score had improved, making us eligible for more funding from HUD. Secondly, we also had increases in rental income as that relates to the ability to do more income verifications over the past year, as well as we saw an increase in revenue under the other income category, which includes things like maintenance fees or utility charges as well. Finally, if you look under the expenses section, you'll see we came in under budget, under administrative. That deal looks at staffing, cost of staffing. For about five months, we had a vacancy in the maintenance mechanic position, and that's where you'll see some savings there. If you'll look further down on the financial sheet as well, I just wanted to point out one other item. Under the capital fund for 2014, at the time that the agenda was posted, we were not able to draw down the FY 14 award. Since then, we have been able to draw that down. You'll see that as $137,273. That has been drawn down and now available for use. Next, looking at the activity quarterly report, this just provides some additional information over what's happened since the housing authority board met since July 2014. Specifically, I wanted to point out, under the activities and events section, one of the city's day of caring projects this year was to repair, repave, and renovate two of the outdoor basketball courts at two of the housing authority sites. And if you haven't been by to see them, you should see them, they look great, and I hear they're being well-used. So, those are the highlights of the quarterly reports for the housing authority. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. We also have our public housing administrator, Bob Vincent, here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jody. And this is provided for our information, and the housing authority board of commissioners will meet...
Our next scheduled meeting will be February, quarterly meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Any questions for...
I have a question. Ms. Miller, on the, it's great that the administrative expenses came in under budget. I hate to see a position vacant for too long, because that creates other issues. But the budget was significantly greater year over year, and could you talk a little bit about the difference there?
I think it really speaks to a few things. One, the continued in-kind support that the city provides to the housing authority. I think looking at the rent income and doing the increased income eligibility and verifications has been a really important part, and that's where that blended model that Human Services Director Peter Wallantus has talked about with the support of Human Services and bringing that whole staff together has been important. We also saw, as I mentioned, because of our scores, increased scores through HUD, being eligible for more money through HUD, which is, is something that was also positive. So, I think those items, and the one other line item that, from year to year could vary, is that other income line item. And as I mentioned, that really, and funding for that is really for things like maintenance charges and those things that come in as additional revenue to the housing authority. So, I think all those things can contribute to that sort of increase.
And I'm sorry, I may not have made that clear. I'm looking specifically on the expense line, administrative expenses. The difference between the year-to-date actual and from year over year?
Well, remember, we added a position. We added that public housing administrator position, so that's where you'll see that as an overall increase, even though we had the one position vacant for five months.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott?
I don't have any questions on this, but thank you for the report. I do want to renew my request to get a list of the houses that we have with the owner-occupancy clause in it, and then maybe at our February meeting, have a discussion on that and its future.
Do you want to do that?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, this was a difficult decision to change the way we did the housing authority, and I think it's been proven to be a good one. It really has.
I think this, I think other communities are looking at this as a way to go in the future, as HUD transitions and the housing authorities face challenges. So, for us, it's worked very well. And that's, a lot of thanks goes to Jody, and to Pete, and to all the staff that have really worked to fully integrate these two operations.
One other item I forgot to mention, starting in January, we'll begin the audit for fiscal year 14, so the board will get that audit at their May meeting.
Okay. And again, this doesn't take any action, this is for information.
Just for information, yes.
Next is the revenue sharing funds for fiscal year 2016, proposed resolution 14-15.
City Engineer Aaron Small will give this report.
Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City staff is once again here for our annual request for city council for permission to apply for revenue sharing funds from VDOT. Past projects funded through this program include the five sidewalk projects completed in 2010, the Prince George and Armistead Avenue project completed this past summer, the nearly complete eight sidewalk projects, which is just finishing up construction on Bypass Road now, the Route 60 East project that will start construction in the next few months, and our spring 2015 paving schedule coming up in probably March, April. The revenue sharing program allows the city to gain more value out of our local dollars by leveraging them 50/50 with VDOT funds, with only a little state oversight required, making this a very advantageous funding source for local governments. In fiscal year 15, the Commonwealth Transportation Board approved a state match of $180,000, or $180 million, for a total of 212 projects throughout the Commonwealth. This year, we are requesting funding for two projects, Phase One of Ironbound Road and additional maintenance paving funds. The Ironbound Road project was originally presented before council in February of 2008 in response to anticipated traffic from High Street. Development has slowed, and funding for transportation project has been pretty scarce in the intervening period, with only 528,000 allocated for the Ironbound Road project. However, the anticipated changes that James Blair, coupled with the redevelopment of the Governor Spotswood property, have increased the urgency of this project. In Phase One of Ironbound Road, the intersection of Long Hill Road will be shifted to the west approximately 100 feet to provide better separation from Richmond Road. It is also anticipated that the Long Hill Road intersection will be signalized as part of this project and provide for turn lanes and an entrance into the Spotswood property. The project also includes the relocation of overhead wiring to underground wiring and approved bicycle and pedestrian facilities in that area. Phase One begins at the rear property line of the gas station at Richmond Road and runs nearly to Middle Street, and is currently estimated at $2,876,000. With our revenue sharing match and previously allocated funding, the local portion of this cost is $1,173,753. As additional funding options are explored and traffic issues materialize, future phases of Ironbound Road will address those improvements at the Richmond Road intersection and Trayburn Drive, as well as those improvements from Trayburn Drive to the corporate limits at DePew Drive. In 2012, the Commonwealth Transportation Board also changed the rules to allow for maintenance projects, which includes asphalt resurfacing, to apply for revenue sharing funds. For many years, the city has allocated a fixed dollar amount for our annual pavement resurfacing program, but the costs for asphalt have increased dramatically over the past 10 years or so. The additional revenue sharing funds allow us to double the amount of work we can perform and still keep us on track with our annual paving efforts. Should the funds be granted, we intend to resurface approximately 4.21 miles of roadway, and currently, the city maintains about 51.2 miles of streets, so the fiscal year 2016 request would cover about 8.2% of the city. Before you today is a resolution supporting this application and authorization for the city manager to enter into agreements for VDOT for any funds granted, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have about the proposed revenue sharing program.
Aaron, thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a couple, and I may have a couple more. What if we don't, what if we're not awarded these funds?
Well, it basically comes down to, we'd have to reapply for additional funding following year, and so, the project usually gets delayed at this point.
So, if you could explain the process a little bit more, there's not an amount that's allocated to this area, and we're going into a smaller pot. We're basically applying against the statewide pot?
Correct.
Okay. And the money that we have through the urban allocation funding, we already have that?
That's $528,000, yes.
Okay. So, we're looking to get, for the, this is for the construction project, we're looking to get 50% of the 2.34 million?
Correct. 50% of the remainder.
And there's 100, how many did you say, 120 million statewide?
It was, last year, the Commonwealth Transportation Board is allowed to allocate up to 200 million per year. This pro, the revenue sharing program has been increasing year after year after year. This past fiscal year, it was 180 million...
180, okay.
...allocated statewide.
But we don't know how much.
And we received, I believe, 450,000 last year.
So, we're taking a big jump in our request?
This is, will be a big jump in our normal request. In the past years, though, we've been extremely successful, even on the larger requests, such as the Prince George, Armistead, and the eight sidewalk project.
So, on top of the 1.2, basically, million, we're asking for another 500,000 for street maintenance?
Correct.
Okay. So, you said, one of the reasons for moving forward with the intersection work was the middle school? Are we getting a little ahead of ourselves here?
No.
Okay.
The, the, whether the Blair, whatever the decision is made ultimately with the use of the Blair campus, Long Hill Road needs to be realigned further to the west, both to increase the separation to Richmond Road and the function of those two intersections together, and also importantly, to intersect with the property directly to the south and allow its redevelopment. And so, regardless of what happens, how soon Blair, something happens on Blair, this is a needed project. It does assist with the use of the Blair site for a school site, because it makes the whole area function better from a traffic standpoint.
And do we, you also mentioned the Spotswood property. We're anticipating that a project like this would increase the marketability or redevelopment or development potential, I guess, at this point, redevelopment potential?
Well, for about a year and a half now, since this alignment is, we have made and known to the owners of that property that the long-term intention of the city is to move Long Hill Road over to that point, so that their plans of accessing the property and how they've talked about its sale has factored that in as something that will happen in the future. So, it has, it is facilitating their ability to market and redevelop the property.
And just to help people understand, we're talking about, when you talk about moving the intersection of Long Hill and Ironbound, basically cutting off part of the corner of that school property?
Right.
And bringing it more into a T instead of an angled intersection?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are all the questions right now.
Scott?
Aaron, can you take me through what, exactly what Phase Two will be? We refer to Phase One.
Phase Two will allow for more widening of the road to provide better turn lanes. The original traffic study that was done back in 2008 for the High Street project, anticipated with that increased traffic, will need a double left turn from Richmond, onto Richmond Road from Ironbound. That cannot be accommodated with the existing configuration, and plus, with the proximity of the other intersections, it really complicates issues if we need to widen in that area. But we're restrained right now with CVS on one side and the gas station on the opposite side. And so, we need to kind of work through those issues. Further south, it would allow for widening bike lanes, and we're actually looking at a multi-use trail along one side of the roadway down to Trayburn Drive, and that's where we would stop Phase Two.
Gotcha.
Phase Three then would go from Trayburn Drive down to DePew.
Okay. And this is probably a question for Jack, and I don't know if he'd be able to answer this or not, but in his planning, has there been any question in the college what their intention is to do with the delerd property long-term?
Well, we do know that they're working on a master plan, that they... Well, we do know that they're working on a master plan that they soon will be making public, and so that will help us mesh the two plans. Doug?
Help me understand better the signalized light, is that something that will be done with this project, or will this project have to meet the warrants that, you know, we talk about when we talk about other lights around town?
This project, the plan for this project is to signalize that intersection, and so the traffic signal would be included with this cost.
Okay. That's all the questions.
Yeah, G D.
Could I ask you about me?
Certainly.
Mr. Tunnel, could you help us understand the, what impact this has, if any?
Sure.
On our flexibility to make improvements on the Monticello Avenue corridor between the two shopping centers, should that redevelopment opportunity arise and we need to move quickly in order to, at the, around the time of the sale in order to encourage redevelopment as opposed to reoccupation?
Right. The, the, the only relationship between the two is, is the city's decision to commit the 1.6 to do this matching grant to pull this through. That's that much less money we have to do anything else with, including Monticello or anything else in the city. So, in the sense that whenever we spend money, there's less money to spend on something else, that's the only connection. And we are not in a position, and we would miss this window of opportunity, because every year, this revenue sharing comes up again, we want to be ready to take maximum advantage of it, and we're not in a position, we could not put in an application today for the Monticello project because there's not enough definition to it, where this project is well-defined, well-studied, and has all the basics in place so we can put together an application and be very precise about what the funding requirements are, and when we get the money, we can execute it and do it. And we're not there yet with the, the Monticello project.
This may be asking you to stretch your forecasting abilities a little bit, but should we apply for these funds, and they are awarded?
Right.
And something happens and we decide, all of a sudden, well, we decide, circumstances change, and all of a sudden, there's a much more urgent need to move on Monticello?
Sure.
Even though we don't, we're not in a position to get the matching funds from the state, are we obligated to go ahead and spend the money on the Ironbound Long Hill, or can we just say, you know, we're going to hold off on this project?
We are saying now that by adopting this resolution, we're saying we are prepared to put up our matching money for it. However, I am sure the revenue sharing program statewide is filled with lots of projects. They got up to the threshold and folks said, oops, we can't really move forward with this, in which case, what's the state's going to do, is ship the money to something else?
Sure.
So, but still, we're taking, it's fully our intention to do this.
Right, but, okay, I understand.
But, but things could change.
Right. I mean, to me, it makes complete sense to pursue the repaving money, I mean, it just extends the money that we know we already are going to and need to spend, and...
Well, and the Monticello project is still, I mean, we don't even have control over the land that we would need for that, and that process, I mean, that, that's going to be a lengthy process to, to both do the design, get all the property and everything to do that, so I'm, I'm not sure that, that even doing this, that something could happen there quickly enough that we would get to the point where we would say, oh, let's shift it there. I mean, it could happen, but I don't think it's very likely.
And my concern is, when there's a window of opportunity on Monticello, it's going to be a very brief window, and we need to be able to be prepared to do what we can.
And we may not be able to use revenue sharing as a source for that reason.
Thinking about other projects that, that have gone on in the city, like the condominiums on Quarter Path, developer there put money in to help fix that road, or the development of High Street, there was developer money, Quarter Path, Doctor's Hospital, there was developer money. We talk about this project and how it's going to aid a particular developer, has, have they made any offers to help offset some of the cost?
Not at this point, but there's a, there's a long way to go. Normally, when that's done, is when a site plan comes in, and when they need city approvals, then at that point, we could say, well, here are the places we need assistance. For instance, you've already mentioned additional right-of-way in that corner, there may be, that may come into play depending on what happens with the gas station. So, it, the, the time you can negotiate that is the time there's, there is a development proposal on the table, and they come to the city, and now we're ready to say, what's, what role should they play in this? And certainly, that's the way we think, that's what we do.
And that's not something we can set up as a requirement, and that's something that has to be offered by the developer?
Yeah, we can't force offers.
Although it seems to work that way someplace, I'm not sure how.
Any, any other questions, discussion?
No, I think anytime we have the opportunity to, to apply for grants, you know, it's prudent for us to take advantage of that, it enhances our buying power, so.
Exactly. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve Resolution 14-15 and authorize the city manager to proceed with applying for FY 16 VDOT revenue sharing funds and to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the revenue sharing program.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aaron, thank you very much. Next is the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Pass, Path, this is proposed Resolution 14-17, and I see Colin and...
Mr. Small's not done yet.
Yes, I assumed you would just stay there, but, but I want to appreciate the, the members of the student assembly who are here today because, and the leadership from students, Scott and others, thank you for being here, because I know this is something you have, has been on your agenda, and this is a first step, it's, it's not the final step, but at least it gets it moving, so thank you all for being here today. Aaron, welcome again.
Thank you, sir. Again, we're requesting city council for permission to apply for Transportation Alternatives Program Funds from VDOT for construction of a multi-use trail along Monticello Avenue from Trayburn Drive near the entrance to the William &amp; Mary School of Education, west to Ironbound Road near the courthouse. The Transportation Alternatives Program redefines the former Federal Transportation Enhancement Program and consolidates these projects with the state's safe routes to schools and recreational trails programs. The Alternatives Program is intended to help local sponsors fund community-based projects that expand travel choices and enhance the transportation experience by improving the cultural, historical, and environmental aspects of the transportation infrastructure. The program does not fund traditional roadway projects or provide maintenance for these facilities, but instead, it focuses on providing for transportation, or for pedestrian bicycle facilities, community improvements, and mitigating the negative impacts of the highway system. The program typically provides 80 percent federal funds with a 20 percent local match and is locally administered by the city through the VDOT, much in the same way as the revenue sharing program. For fiscal year 15, total statewide allocations of 20 million were approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, making this a very competitive process. The project consists of the construction of a 10-foot wide multi-use asphalt trail, which would run parallel to Monticello Avenue in the College Woods area, and would include street lighting for both the roadway and the trail. The roadway segment has no, this existing roadway segment has no pedestrian accommodations, no lighting, narrow bike lanes, and no shoulder, creating a pedestrian safety concern for residents and students traveling between the college, Newtown, High Street, and Midtown. The trail would cross College Creek near its eastern terminus using a separated wooden trestle bridge to minimize the environmental impact to the wetlands upstream of the campus and Lake Matoka. Total project cost is estimated at $1,249,000, with Transportation Alternatives providing funds of $999,300 and local matching funds of just under $250,000. Due to the competitive nature of the Transportation Alternatives Program, we have not included the segment of Compton Drive in this request, as it was felt that the increased cost would decreases our success, our chances of success. The project was a major topic of discussion at the city's annual meeting with the College William &amp; Mary, as well as with student government representatives, and will be discussed when staff meets with the college tomorrow as well. Before you, is a resolution supporting this application, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have about the Transportation Alternatives Program.
Aaron, thank you very much, and this, you know, the, as I understand it, the proposal's already been submitted, but the propose also requires the, the resolution by the, the local government?
Correct. Similar to the revenue sharing program, the deadline for the applications go in at the beginning of November, but we have another month leeway to follow up with other paperwork such as the resolutions.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions?
I do. Mr. Small, it says that it's connecting from, along Monticello from Trayburn to Ironbound?
Yes.
So, that when it connects to, but, but it's on the opposite side of Monticello, it's on the college side of Monticello, not on the...
We actually haven't decided which side particularly, because that's not, that the kind of, that's one of those details that we have yet to resolve, and that's part of our discussions with the college. The current thinking is that the college side would be the best side, would be the least expensive side.
It also seems, I, I don't know for sure, I haven't conducted a study, a pedestrian study, but it would also seem to be the side that would provide the greatest ease of access for the most pedestrians moving up the corridor.
That's correct.
If it's on either side, is, the sidewalk then comes down to basically the point where this picks up, there is either a road or a driveway?
Correct.
But it gives full connectivity? Okay. That's the only question I had.
Scott?
Aaron, I really appreciate you pushing this forward, I've, I've pestered folks about this for a while, and just, just glad to see it on its way, and even if we don't get it this year, we'll be able to retune for next year, so that's, that's excellent. There's a lot, a lot of folks in the community talking about this, and very appreciative.
I have no questions.
I, I just want to echo Scott, it is downright scary to ride down that road, especially at night, because of the people walking, and anything to improve that is a good idea.
It's a, it's a real safety issue, so let's, let's hope this gets funded, because, and, and again, on the, the matching, the discussions with the college is that the local match would be split between the city and the college, at least that's the, the understanding at this point.
Yes, sir. I was finished with questions, but not comment.
Okay.
This, to me, is one of the more important pedestrian access improvements that we will have made, if, if we're successful, that we will have made in a very long time, because this is one of the more difficult pieces of road for people to move along, because of two things, the lack of lighting and the speed and volume of traffic along there. It's, it's, if you think it's scary driving down there, driving with pedestrians, walking there, and, and yet there's no real alternative way to get from the city out the Monticello corridor on foot. You could go up Compton and cut up the hill and through that neighborhood, through, I think you have to go through somebody's yard to do that, but there, or you can go all the way down to the other end of Ironbound and walk around, which is just, nobody is reasonably going to do that. So, from a safety standpoint, from a fitness standpoint, people being able to, some people actually run on the street there, that's no fun either. I mean, this, there's so much to like about it, and then you add on top of it the fact that the state would pay, well, if we get it, 80 percent, and then we partner with the college on the remaining 20 percent. I just can't say strongly enough how important I think this is and how much I hope we're successful. And to Mr. Foster's point, even if we don't get it this year, we should keep coming back, if, if that's possible.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a long, it's a project that's long overdue. Newtown is relatively new when you compare the grand scheme of things, and so I think it's, it's kind of crept up on us here in the last 10 years that, that this is a, a major artery that needs this type of focus, and so, you know, I'm glad that city staff and, and you all that met with the college were able to get this, this going, and particularly to Aaron and the rest of those that participated in fast-tracking this application to try to get, get this done. So, you know, if it works out as it's proposed, you know, it's a no-brainer, it's the best $125,000 that could come from our pocket. Would like to see a right turn lane off of Monticello onto Compton, I think that would make a big difference.
That would help, yeah.
Yeah, there, there are many road improvements there that are needed, but this, this, this pedestrian path is really the highest bar without questions.
Just wanted to comment, there's another reason why nothing has occurred there to date is because it's, it's an unusual situation that this is not in the city street system. Otherwise, it certainly would have had street lighting a long time ago, and, and no doubt would have had at least a sidewalk, but, so, but there's no question, even though it is not a city responsibility, the way all the other city streets are, is, is clearly, it's important to the residents of the city, so it makes every reason for the city to get involved.
Even though the college in VDOT control.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a motion, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve, approve Resolution 14-17 and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the Transportation Alternative Program to build the Monticello Avenue College Woods Multi-Use Path.
Second? I have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye. Aaron, again, thank you, and thank all the people involved in this, and I know you're meeting with the college tomorrow, but convey to them our appreciation of, of getting this on the fast track, and I know the student assembly and the students here and students that, who use that really look forward to our being successful with this application, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Final report is creation of a beautification awards committee, proposed Resolution 14-16.
Yes, sir. This follows up on a discussion the council had back in August, posing that this awards committee be created. The resolution provides for a three-member committee, and their task would be to make recommendations to the city council on both residences and businesses to receive city beautification awards that would be presented by the city council, city staff would provide assistance to the committee in terms of the, the work they need done to, to make those recommendations. It also provides, at the, at the recommendation of the architectural review board, the possibility of extending into some type of architectural awards as well, that's not defined at this point, but at least it provides that should the city council wish the group to do that as well.
Any questions, comments?
If we do this, do we, have we had any conversation with the planning commission about their plan?
I think, I think their plan is to continue having an advisory group that would advise them, that would be appointed by them and be an advisory group. In the past, that advisory group has had a, either representative city council or an appointee by city council, but that really doesn't make sense to have a group that advises, a group that advises city council, to have city council. So, so the planning commission, I think their intent is to continue having a beautification advisory committee for planning commission that, that would, you know, give input to them as, as they, they deal with things, but this would take the, the awards and put them in, in, in a separate committee, and, and then leave that advisory structure from beautification committee to the planning commission, and planning commission to city council.
So, basically, it would take the beautification awards function out of that advisory committee, create another committee to do that?
And let them be totally advisory to planning commission on beautification issues.
I, I know we've talked about this before, but I'm just, I'm just not sure what I'd think about. Well, I, I hear from others, I, you don't need to get this, I hear what colleagues think.
Yeah. You, yeah, to plan, a former planner would give a chance.
A former member of the beautification vice committee.
The, I, I think this is an appropriate role for council, you know, it, you know, you go to, as the mayor, go to that planning commission meeting to give the awards, it kind of makes sense that it would, you know, this would fall under a different purview. And I think it allows planning commission the opportunity to be more focused, or the beautification committee to be more focused in, in their roles advisors.
And, and I, I would see the awards now being done as part of a city council meeting other than planning, and so it raises that visibility even, even more there.
It seems logical to me, yeah.
Scott, any?
I think it's a smart step.
I guess my hesitation comes from in creating one more committee, one... I guess my hesitation comes from, in creating one more committee, one more advisory group, having been on the BAC when the awards program was initiated, one of the reasons that that was done was because almost the BAC needed something to do, it needed something more to do, and, and so now it comes away from that, we create a separate group, and I guess it's up to planning commission then to do what they want.
Yeah, it seems to me it is planning's commission's decision of what they want, whether they want to have an advisory group, and if they do want to have one, what do they want it to do, and it doesn't seem to me that's a city council, you know, we don't need to insert ourselves there, they need to decide how they want it to serve them. But, you know, taking the awards, which, you know, essentially allocates city funds, you know, all the other, you know, commissions or committees that do that are city council-appointed committees, so that's, that's why, you know, it seems to make sense this way.
And then whatever staff support would go to the awards committee, and there would be no staff support to the BAC advisory committee, or is that yet to be determined?
I think that's to be determined by the planning commission and the staff that serves the planning commission, I don't know how, how much support they would need.
Any input on that question about, would there be staff support for the beautification advisory committee to the planning commission?
Right now, I think with these functions going here, the staff work will be with the awards committee.
Okay.
The other issues, I think that that committee, at least for the time being, could do things like their own minutes and that sort of thing, so I don't anticipate a staff role at this point, but things could evolve.
Yeah, I think what we're saying to planning commission is, you know, you take this and run with it and determine what's, what the needs are going to be for this advisory function coming from this group.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Resolution fourteen dash sixteen.
Second. Motion, a second, call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mayor Farland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
City attorney reports.
Nothing to add today.
Okay, perfect. Any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Any new business? See any, that brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum, a time when anybody who wishes to speak to council on any item may do so, I do have four speakers cards, the first is Jay Everson, Jay, welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. I was here earlier in the year about the, I called it, at that time, the fifth middle school, which for now they're called the fourth, full-service middle school, and there's been a lot going on and not a lot going on, which still kind of seems that the county and the school board are kind of at an impasse, and the outside looking in, seems like you guys are kind of out of the whole focus of what's going on, because I guess everybody in the county, myself included, until recently concluded whatever they decide, you're just going to write your portion to check, and make it happen, until I, of course, discovered that the current contract doesn't have provisions for your percent, which changes the dynamic a little bit here. There's three points I want to leave with you, is I would, since there is no contract to CIP cost, as we stand here, Chairman Jones could walk in here after a contentious battle with the school board, and we could start another contentious battle here with the, with the city council about, you know, you only got seven percent of the students, they want ten percent of the money, so on and so forth, which brings me down to the next point I would like to leave you with, there's three points, the second would be this, one of the things I heard, and had been told, is that I, when I came here before, I thought about the IB program in the annex, and it's confusing programming, measuring programming, which is the school board's function, with fiscal, financial issues, which is governing bodies. Well, it occurred to me that you really can't separate these two, because back in about nineteen ninety, when this news first came on, the Board of Supervisors, this community decided that smaller school facilities will get produced better outcomes than large school facilities, and that's driven programming for a long time, and a lot of money spent by the city citizens and the county residents. And I sent you a report recently that was interesting enough, sent by the central office, Dr. Constantino, to the middle school facility study committee, which basically says that after a generation of students going through this, because we're not the only community to do this back in the early nineties, they discovered that there is no difference, there is no specific impact, small school facilities versus large school facilities, and what, that report was kind of interesting, because, on two levels, one was, my goodness, it was in plain English, a government report in plain English, and the second thing, at the very end, the second to the last paragraph, if I believe, if I remember correctly, it pointed out, the definitive thing is principals, teachers, and staff. I mean, who knew that schools could be successful based on the people running it, not the size of it? It's a novel concept, and, so it occurred to me that when you make a decision like this, you are making programming decisions, that there is, the separation between the two bodies is not as, is not as stark as we kind of want to make it to be, and it also, when you get down to the smaller schools, larger school discussion, the reason this has all come to the head at this point, of course, is Berkeley. I mean, everybody knows that Berkeley is like packed in here with cities' kids, so what's happening in Berkeley really impacts your contingent's kids, and, so what is the solution for Berkeley? Well, I have proposed and written on this, and have talked to the Board of Supervisors and bring this to you today, is the third point I'd like to make, the zero CIP option. There is a no-cost capital improvement option. First part of that is fully utilize the facilities we already have, that have been paid work by city and county taxpayers that are not being used. And then the most notable one, of course, is the annex. Now, you recall, back when Hornsby opened up, they consolidated central office, physically great idea, into James Blair. At the same time, they committed to having students be at the annex, the city taxpayers and the county taxpayers have already paid to convert the annex to, if you will, a mini full-service school. It's got ten classrooms, updated science lab, it has a guidance office, a principal's office, can fit two hundred, two hundred and fifty students. The second thing that I have mentioned is that we should fully utilize the facilities that we already are using, and that's a little tricky. Under state law, every teacher is required to have a one-period planning session, at which point there is no full-service educational instruction going on in that room. One of the things I think that you should inquire of the school board and the central office is provide you with how many of these classrooms are empty in each of the three middle schools, periods one through six, because my understanding is, of course, I don't have hard numbers on this, very difficult to get this, but I understand there could be as many as sixteen of these rooms available, periods one through six, and at the middle school level, geez, sixteen times twenty-five, that's three hundred. Two hundred, two fifty at the annex, you've got your middle school, and you haven't spent a single dime capital improvement-wise. Now, what they're going to tell you, and by rights they probably should tell you, and we know this from Berkeley already, they'll say, well, you can do all this, put three hundred more kids in each of these, you know, a hundred in each school, or however it works out, but you've got cafeteria problem. Well, we're all familiar with the traffic from here to the beach, it's heinous, we're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to fix it, but it's never talked about is why? Well, most cities are like this, and traffic disperses out like this, all around it, three hundred and sixty degrees, but when you get out from here to the beach, it's on peninsula, so all the traffic is going at a hundred and eighty degrees, and it's no surprise that you have a lot of congestion. And you go down there on a Friday afternoon, and somebody has a wreck, which I participated in about fifteen years ago, you back up the traffic from Fort Hughes Boulevard to Bush Gardens, go in the cafeteria at Berkeley, and take a look at how they're set up, they're all set up, they were set up like this when I was in school, not really, that was back in the fifties and sixties, you have tables like this, they're in rows, they have built-in seats, and they're set apart enough for two people to walk by. Middle school kids stand, go in there sometimes, look, strictly boys, they stand, so they stand in the aisle, person comes this way, they can't get by, just like a wreck on the interstate. Well, the food service industry out there, which I was, I participated many years, many years ago, and for many years, has adjusted to this issue. You go into your, even McDonald's is doing this now, where you go into casual food restaurants, round tables, kids stand, three inch of chairs, you get six people, if you have somebody standing here, they can easily go around and disperse with three hundred and sixty degrees. Some of these McDonald's have put it in shelves along walls, easily done in places like Berkeley. The point here is this, we're talking about a twenty-first century education for our children, in my case, my grandchildren, but we have twentieth century, you know, laid-out cafeterias. The cafeteria is only a problem because of the way we structure it, and it's a lot cheaper to put in round tabletops, which is then thirty million, thirty-two, fifty, sixty, whatever the number is, for full-service middle school, and once you commit to that, if you look at their ten-year facilities plan that they approved last month, you've also in process committing to another elementary school and another high school, and that's, that's real money, and, the, maybe one other point I wanted to make, I know I'm way over, I apologize, oh, on this issue here about these, of these vacant classrooms that I mentioned before, and sorry to jump around on this one, little note here, when my grandson was in Berkeley, he was in tenth grade, that's sort of what, two, three years ago, they put the first trailers out there, and they put, and they're all foreign languages, foreign languages, we're spending a lot of money, your taxpayers are, the city county taxpayers are, but they're these empty rooms, because we have kids go to teachers. Well, why didn't the teacher just go to the kid? You know, you could do away with those, just by having teachers go to kids in vacant classrooms because of the state law on planning periods, but at a minimum, even if you think all of this is nonsense, even if you think, well, just go ahead and build a sixty million dollar, thirty-two, whatever it is, even if you said it today, it's going to be twenty-seventeen to fall until you open it, even if you start right now, it seems to me at a minimum, for the city kids in Berkeley, that the, that there be a spot redistricting, because in aggregate, the middle schools are not overcrowded, Berkeley is, and they should spread them around to be fair to everybody and to help their situation. I appreciate your patience, because I know you have a three-minute limit here, you're very patient with me, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Next card is Dennis Welsh, Dennis, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having me today. Mayor Holman and the council, what I'm here for today, actually, is I'm Dennis Welsh, and I'm the building manager of the community service building. Actually, I'm standing in for Bill Unitas. Matter of fact, I think that you probably got an email from Bill about inviting you, but he wanted to personally talk to the council and invite you to next week's, as a matter of fact, a week from today, our luncheon. What we're going to try to accomplish there is we're going to honor the people, the original board members that started this, we're going to talk to and honor a lot of people that support us, and my job today was to personally invite you, and for the ones that could make it next week, we'd like to see you there. Thank you.
And Dennis, if I remember correctly, this is the twentieth anniversary of the conversion of that facility and the use for, thank you for being here, and thank, give our regards to Bill as well, thank you. Next, Gary Shelley, Gary, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gary Shelley, I live at two oh five in East Springs Road, and I'm here today to talk once again about the multiple intrusions on my properties by city staff. I speak not only for myself, but also on behalf of other citizens who have recently come before you. The intrusions were outrageous violations of their rights to privacy and peaceful enjoyment of their property. You've heard me say that you have created an atmosphere here whereby you do not hold yourself accountable, or your staff, or each other. One only needs to review the open forum sessions of the past few months to witness how citizens who have stepped forward with legitimate questions and concerns have had no meaningful response from you. In a past session, I shared with you emails I wrote to the city in support of Ms. Carrie Flanagan, who spoke here in May. Today, I would like to present emails I wrote in support of Mr. and Mrs. Philip Christopherson, who spoke here last month. Mr. Skinner, boy, did I just catch an earful from my tenant at six oh two Capital Landing Road. Evidently, one of your officers was actually on his property. I don't think that I have to remind you that this is clearly against regulations as written by our city attorney. My tenant is extremely upset. My tenant is valuable to me and the community, he and his wife have been there several years and are assets to the neighborhood, I'm fortunate to have them. My tenant says that these intrusions have been going on since he first moved in, and that frankly, he is sick and tired of it. My advice to him is let his city councilman know. Speaking of which, I am stunned at your knee-jerk refusal to my suggestion that you and I meet with the city councilman, after all, I'm a constituent, you are a civil servant, and city council provides oversight. One would think that if you were confident in your job performance, that you would be happy to defend it. Let me finish by saying that it is one thing for the city to go after me, but it is entirely inappropriate to upset my tenants. They are entitled to peaceful enjoyment of their premises, I will always support them if they have done nothing wrong. So that was an email I sent, but evidently, I didn't express myself clearly enough. Two weeks later, I had to send this one. Mr. Skinner, I received another complaint today from my tenants at six oh two Capital Landing Road regarding intrusions by your officers onto their property. This complaint was much angrier than the one I wrote to you about a couple of weeks ago. Evidently, this time there were two of your employees on their property, even outside their back bedroom window. My tenant was quite offended by a remark one of your officers made, perhaps it was meant to be a joke, perhaps you think all of this is funny? My tenant found no humor in it whatsoever. It is no wonder that you fear speaking with city councilmen, regardless of whatever went on over the house today, one cannot help but wonder why it takes two of your officers, in two different cars no less, to inspect this property. One cannot help but wonder if our city doesn't have better uses of our limited funds. The city performed a very rigorous rental inspection, and the property passed with only a couple of minor corrections. Nothing of note has changed with the property since then, yet you continue to pursue trivial issues. In order that there be no miscommunication with your office, I earlier requested an itemized list from you of corrections that you wanted performed, in typical fashion, you have not responded. Your office has lacked oversight for far too long, at considerable public expense. I will not tolerate your office upsetting my tenants. They are entitled to peaceful enjoyment of their property. My tenants are quiet, peaceful grandparents who have lived in the neighborhood for several years. The woman is undergoing rather serious surgery tomorrow, you can do better than this. These attempts at communicating with the city fell on deaf ears. Our attempts continue to be met with silence. Mayor, you have been unmoved by the appearances here of an unmarried young woman, living alone, and a man whose wife has had memories of a brutal armed home invasion triggered by actions of your staff. You, Mayor, have ignored my questions and concerns regarding these incidents. On behalf of Ms. Flanagan, Mr. and Mrs. Christopherson, and myself, I will once again ask the questions I asked in July, and again in September, and again in October, of which we have received no response, we deserve answers. Number one, why was the city manager not made aware of the complaint to the police by Ms. Flanagan regarding the trespassing on her property by a city employee? And two, have there been other instances of city employees trespassing on private property? If so, when, where, and why? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Thank you, Mr. Shelley. I have another speaker's card, and this is Scott Caravelo. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. On behalf of William Mary Student Assembly, I'd just like to vocalize our appreciation and support for the Monticello multi-use path resolutions that you've passed today. Your pursuit of transportation alternative project funding is a win-win for residents and students alike, and we enthusiastically encourage this initiative. I think we all agree that to create a multi-use path down Monticello would be a major boon to the city. As from a student perspective, we think that those of us lacking cars can make use of a more safe, secure route to Newtown. This provides a distinct advantage to business owners and operators in the Newtown area, so they will be able to further tap into the student market. This social and economic interaction will continue to promote the vibrancy, character, and economic well-being of the area. Both myself and the student assembly are very excited about this project. Securing this funding will provide an immense benefit to our community, and we look forward to watching this initiative progress. On another unrelated note, as of late, there have been some undue grumblings about the state of town-gam relations. Without getting into an intense dissection of the relationship or statements made, I would like to say that we feel that relations with the city, students, and residents have never been better. Having been around this body and other city and community organizations for three years now, I feel I can say our communication is clearer and more focused, with more open lines available than ever before. There is a much deeper bond of respect and trust shared between all segments of this community. I, for one, am intensely proud of that, and look forward to working alongside yourselves and others in the city to continue to improve that relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate that. Does anyone else wish to speak to council on any matter? Sabrina, welcome.
Ms. Minister, I give you some forms to pass down to the other representatives, thanks. My name is Sabrina Fairbanks, I'm a landlord at 201 Cary Street, and I'm here today because while I've been a consistent advocate of changing some of the ordinances to make things in our neighborhoods better, particularly our rental neighborhoods, as I've been told, while you make the ordinances, you might not necessarily be able to implement everything. So here's a suggestion, actually, it's a form adapted from the city of Richmond, which I think would help with some of these problems, and it just seems to me that it would be easier, wiser to adapt a form where the legal powers that be in Richmond, you know, why reinvent the wheel if they've already have something like this? One of these, if you look at the form, these are problems that are typically impacted by parking. While we don't have a parking department, in Richmond, this form is filled out and given to the finance department, since they're collecting the money. If you'll notice, some of the reasons I think a form like this would be helpful when renters are applying for decals and guest passes would be the following. It would hold the renters and the landlords accountable for who should be parking at these rental properties. As you know, we've got lots of extra cars and people down there, and this would highlight where, that they understand, where they would sign on the back, that they understand where they should park, and they sign that. For instance, without requiring park where you live ordinance. It would address the problem of renters who no longer reside in a rental property using that decal. I know I've spoken to several council members about that, where you could have somebody on a month-to-month tenancy, they've moved out, many of them in May, and my own experience, I had a car that was in front of our building for all summer, taking up two spots, but it was perfectly legal because that decal was still good till the end of August. So this would make it so that once their lease ended, they would not have parking privileges anymore, despite having that decal. It would also require renters to sign a legal document, which says they understand the rules with associating on a parking decal street, and it highlights the consequences for misusing those decals and guest passes. There hasn't been a landlord I've talked to that knows about all these parking ordinances, and we never have given them out in our lease. Some of them have tried to add little clauses in our lease to address the problem, but this would make every landlord, and as you see, landlords have to sign it as well, every landlord and tenant would know the basic rules. And these are pretty much the ordinances that are getting abused the most. It would also help the landlords and the property management companies with the problems that we're having with these holdover tenants. And for those of you who don't know what that is, that's a person, if I move my boyfriend in, and they're typically living there with me, but as a property manager or landlord, I don't have a contract with that person. So I only have a contract with the people on my lease. So it would help address that, that it would shift the burden of proof to my tenants that, okay, this car's here every day. If they don't live here, where do they live? You prove they don't live here, in my building. So it would be helpful to us landlords, a property manager that I know told me that she's got a place in councilor's clothes, and the neighbors complain all the time that this car is there all the time, and it's not a resident. But the tenants there, the one of the female tenants said, it's my boyfriend, he's a guest. And this form would really help the city define what is a guest, you know, who was using this guest pass? And as you see, this is an arbitrary number, this seven days, but, you know, if you're going to be parked at this place for more than whatever the city would determine is reasonable for a guest, then after that, it makes a presumption that this person is living there. You know, if their car's there 24/7, they're living there. And that would help us, help the city, get rid of some of these holdover tenants by shifting the burden of proof to them, and that's what I have.
Terrific, thank you. And you provided copies to the city attorney and city managers.
Yes. Thanks so much.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Sabrina. Anybody else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I believe we have a motion for closed session.
We do. Mr. Mayor, I'm moving to go into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning succession planning, and one property matter per sub-paragraph three regarding acquisition of property for redevelopment of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining or negotiation strategy of public body.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. News. Aye.
Mr. Paul. Aye.
Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session. Thank you all for being here today.